You went over. It's alright.
Not yet. Yep, there you go. Yep, and then we'll hit that. Okay, we're good?
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, March 11th at 7 o'clock PM 2025. I now call this Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting to order. Ms. Schultz, if you call the roll, please.
Trustee Burden.
Present.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Here.
Trustee McAbey.
Here.
Would you please all stand for the pledge?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Our first item on the agenda is presentations in the Fairfield Prevention Coalition. Yes?
Good, awesome. Most of you guys know me, I'm Joe Markle, some of the executives who are in Fairfield Prevention Coalition. We've been around forever, over 15 years. We've been working with the Fairfield City Schools in grade 6 through 12. They do a lot of great tremendous things. You probably need to stay making drugs, alcohol, vaping, and all that kind of stuff. We have shifted gears and added to our plate opioid prices. So we know that there's some things that we can be doing with opioids to head off adolescents who try prescription pain medications, misuse them, take somebody's medication that's wrong to them, take it to get high, whatever, which can lead to a heroin addiction. So I have to tell you that I get around the country speaking about opioid prices. When I was in Atlanta, Georgia, last year at the National Heroin Conference, there were a lot of workshops on treatment programs, recovery programs, back-to-work programs, housing and stability for people who are struggling with addiction. Very expensive stuff, you know, on the back end of people who get addicted. And we have to have those things. But on the flip side of the coin, we could just talk for a second about preventing these things before it happens. So we use science-based approaches to addressing the risk factors for adolescents before they become addicted to opioid-based pain medications and eventually heroin. So we've been doing that for a while in Fairfield, for about three or four years now. The reason that I'm here, and we are here today, so members of our officers, our coalition, is because about a year ago, we came up here and we asked you for some money, specifically opioid settlement dollars from the state. We're here today to report on what we found with that money. They owe it to you, to tell you, you were so gracious when you got the $10,000 to do prevention work, not rehabilitation treatment, other tools for that, true prevention. So we want to share with you today, probably seven minutes of your time, to just go over what we've actually been doing. Thank you.
You know, despite our strategies for all substance uses, and we've been trending down for about six to eight years. All our youth trends with drugs and alcohol are trending in the right direction, but we still have a lot of work to do. Based on our latest survey, we still have about 8% of students using alcohol regularly. Take to your 8%, multiply it by the 5,000 students who took the survey, you still got a lot of students using alcohol. 5.7% of students still using marijuana, 8% still using a vapor product. Luckily, only about 2.1% are using prescription pain medications without a doctor's permission. And that's, it's the statistic we still need to work on. There are still students getting addicted, turning into teenagers, and some are dropping out of school, some are dropping out of their jobs, and going down that road that we don't want them to go on. So I'm going to actually let a couple of our students do the talking. I'll introduce to you Julia Schuster, who is actually our student coalition president. She's just going to share with you a little update about the youth coalition.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Julia, like Joe said, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what our youth coalition has been doing in and around our school. So first, like Joe said, we are an evidence-based practices in order to reduce the abuse of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and vaping, and also prescription medicine abuse in our school. We actually have four youth coalitions in and around our community. We have two middle school coalitions, one freshman coalition, and one senior coalition. And we have 137 students overall. Some of the initiatives we have been taking recently, we've been doing our Red Ribbon Week, National Smokeout Day, Safe Prom Campaign, Safe Graduation Campaign, Project Sticker Shock, and our You Make a Difference Campaign. And from those campaigns, we have actually seen a very substantial drop in our numbers of people who are abusing these substances in and around our schools. So from 2019 to 2023, prescription pain medicine abuse decreased by 38%. Alcohol use decreased by 51%, marijuana use decreased by 16%, and tobacco use decreased by 86%. I'm going to turn it over to Regina now, so she can talk about some of our initiatives in more detail.
Hello, everyone. My name is Regina Rai, and I am the senior representative. I'm here to talk to you guys about Preparing Effects, which is an evidence-based program that we do four times a year. It is where we go out as senior coalition members into groups, into the middle schools, and we use fun skits and content that we practice and plan out, and we present it to them in a fun way. We try to avoid any scare tactics, just so that we are using appropriate approaches and helping these little kids who are still new to the fact of the dangers of prescription drug use, especially opioid-based pain medication. Along with the data that Julia provided, we have able to connect with 750 students for over 10 years. So that's 7,500 students. Now, I'm going to give this to Karis, so she can talk about more substance prevention.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karis Melmasoro, and I'm the secretary of the youth coalition this year. And I'm here to talk to you more in detail about some campaigns that we have coming up into the springtime that go along with prom and graduation. So we have a lot of awesome campaigns, as they've been talking to you about. However, science tells us that these campaigns tend to be, they can be overlooked during the prom and graduation, just in the excitement of the year. So we take additional initiatives in order to combat that. One of the things we do is a program called Sticker Shock, which is where we look to help from our community. And the members from the high school go to place little bright green stickers on alcohol with the permission of the places that sell this that encourage parents that they should not be giving to minors, as well as encouraging these places not to sell to minors and to check their IDs. And for these prevention campaigns to be effective, we need to rely on our community, and we need the support of everyone that we can get, which is why we look to places that sell alcohol in order to kind of make an additional barrier against these things. Thank you.
So I'll just wrap up and tell you that after COVID, we had a lot of students who were working, or going to school hybrid. They were staying in their homes, you know, doing virtual meetings and stuff like that. So we thought, coming out of COVID, like, we're never going to get students to rejoin the youth coalition. We've got to start all over again. It was quite the opposite. We have 167 students apply to be on our four coalitions. And they're excited. They want to change their community for the better. They want to start in their schools. They want to start with their friends. There's a lot of misperceptions about young people today that we're trying to clear up. Most young people want to give back to their community. We do have to get the word out about all these substance use issues that they're talking about. Unfortunately, we have parents and other people who are over youth, who are kind of the people that are part of the problem. So we need you folks at the community level to help us out and support us. We're doing a city proclamation in a couple of weeks, where we're going to do Safe Prom Month with Fairfield City Council. And the last thing we're going to ask you is we put life-size silhouettes, part of Safe Prom, all over businesses and government offices all over Fairfield. We have one at the police station coming. I'm not sure, Chief, who you're getting. We'll try to get you a nice smiling young person's silhouette, holding a positive message that has a positive quote on it, or a drug-free message. We are trying to saturate the community with a positive social norm campaign that most youth are doing the right thing. And again, the second reason why we're here, we would like to be considered down the road in the future, when the time comes, to possibly get some more funding to keep doing the wonderful work that they're doing. And of course, if we can answer any questions for you, you have us here. And I'll introduce Christine Gorchek in the back. She's our youth coordinator, who's actually overseeing all the youth coalitions in the four schools. So with that, can we answer any questions, or would you have any questions for any of our officers?
Just want to thank you all for coming back to tell us what happened. We don't always find out the kind of the back end and how things went. And I really appreciate your coming out tonight to tell us how that went and what you did. So thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
We plan on it. We have a lot of sophomore and junior coalition members. We have a very small senior class, so we have plenty of students coming back next year. So a lot of great things on the horizon. Any other questions for us?
I do have a question. As it relates to discipline at the high school, as a use, I know the self-reported use has been going down. What about the discipline for students using drugs or vaping at school?
Yeah, especially vaping, yeah.
Has that been on the rise, or that been on the downturn?
So you wouldn't believe it, but vaping is actually, has been on an eight-year decline, not only in Fairfield, but across Ohio, across Pennsylvania, and across Kentucky. Basically, when COVID hit, all the friends who were the negative influences with, you know, vaping and all those other things, they didn't have access to them. So all those, all the substances came down across the nation. They have not gone back up, keeping our fingers crossed. I can't speak for the school, because we're not school employees, but I will tell you that under Matt Crapo's supervision, he's director of people services, they're looking at that alternatives to suspension. They want to keep the students in school and work with them. That I do know.
Thank you. And another question is, since the state of Ohio, or the voters in the state of Ohio approved recreational use of marijuana, is there a new strategy that you have to discuss the implications with youth as they become of age and have access to use that recreational?
Yeah, our approach is strengths-based, so it's, you're in charge of your body, regardless of what's going on around you. Unbelievably, with the recreational use being approved and become legal, the juvenile rates are still going down. It's remarkable, but it's happening, not only in Ohio, but tri-state areas as well. But we keep using the same approach, which is be somebody, have hope for the future. What's your spark? Get involved, get connected. We're always working on protective factors. It's, so far, it's working.
Well, thank you, Joe. Thank you for coming. It's always great to hear from you. Great work you're doing, and of course, the students, the great work you're doing. I have grandchildren coming up into the junior high years, and it's great to know there's a good program out there to help them, steer them in the right direction. Thank you very much.
I agree, and thank you. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Yeah, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. You can go whenever you'd like.
You don't hurt our kids.
We're actually going to exit.
You can go out on the playground and talk to the youth out there about what you're doing, because the playground is full right now. Thank you very much. Okay, our next agenda item is old business. The first item is the fire station 211. Mr. Pennsy?
Yes, I would like to bring to your attention tonight that we went ahead and hired a company to do some geotech borings on the parking lot to the south of the fire station. So once we get some reports back on that, whether that site would support a new fire station or not, we're just going to use it to be able to rule it out or rule it in, whichever way it goes. But that's the only thing we had tonight to report.
So you're just going to report whether it's feasible to build something on that property?
Right, because it's not, there's no point in proposing it if the site can't handle it, so.
Any other new discussion as it relates to Station 211 from anyone on the board, or chief, or anything? Any new discussion?
I think we got to move forward. Fix the problems that we have. Put it out to bed and get a real number and go to work on it.
Do you guys know where you think you might be on that?
I mean, I think what Mr. Pennsy is asking is, are we prepared to move forward with building a whole new building? Are we looking to incorporate part of the old building? Just fixing the roof? What's your feelings right now?
I think option one is the only one we can afford. Let's repair the damage, the roof and the water damage.
I'd like to find out, to get the results of the boring, to see if any of the other options are feasible. Before I'm comfortable discussing that further. So I'd like to get that information.
I'd make a motion that we move forward with option one, put it out to bed, get a real number, and move forward.
I tend to agree with Trustee Harkemaier at this time. I may agree with Trustee McAbey soon, but I still would like to see what our other, our options are too, before moving forward.
So that sounds to me like both of you are interested in building a new building.
No, not necessarily. Unnecessarily.
I don't understand why we're going to drill holes and spend money if we're not serious about that.
Well, because I'm not sure that I'm prepared to just put a Band-Aid on it for right now. I want to look at the overall, how old the building is, how many more years we're going to get use out of it, if we, you know, because are there more issues inside this building that we haven't even really discovered yet? And if that's the case, then I don't want to put, you know, close to three-quarters of a million dollars into just fixing the roof. You know, I noticed that there was damage in the bays. And so, you know, if we come back and there's boring, the boring says, the boring of the land says that there's issues in that parking lot, does that also mean that the south wall of the bay may soon start deteriorating? And so I don't want to put three-quarters of a million dollars into a roof, knowing that eventually that side of the building is going to start falling as well. So I'd like to know the soil is good, to help me make a decision based on what I, my one-third opinion is towards what we're going to do with that building. I think we need to do something, obviously. I'm not prepared to tear it down and rebuild. I'm not prepared right now to build an extension on it, but I would like to get that data to help me make my decision.
So can we at least establish a timeframe? I mean, it's March. Probably take 60 days to get this. How long will it take to fix? Probably a better part of a year.
Well, I think if we're just talking about option one, I don't know that that would take the better part of the year to do all that. So, but-
Ripping the roof off and putting a new roof on sounded pretty complicated. I mean, I'm not in construction, but, but again, if we, if we did that, and we've got 10 more years out of it, at 70,000 a year, I think that sounds like a good deal. I mean, I think we could get more than that. Yes, the building's settling. I don't see those problems being something to keep us from using it. So again, we started last March, bringing somebody in to get this discussion going. We need to move it on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hoping that we'll get more data at our next meeting, which, you know, is in April. And hopefully, in April or May, I think we can move forward with the decision.
Well, I said this before, this is a big issue. I don't think there's a bigger issue in the township than this. So if we get the data next week, I think we need to meet next week and find out and move along, and not wait until April or May.
Okay.
That's fine. I can let you know when we get it.
What's that cost for us to do that?
$5,000, $6,000, something like that.
Is it $5,000 or $6,000?
Yes.
I do not have that information available at this time. I can forward it to you tomorrow, if you would like.
What made you, what made you decide to do that?
Because we wanted to either rule it in or rule it out as a viable option.
Who's "we"?
Me and my cohorts, my staff.
I have a motion on the floor, but I'm going to consider it.
Is there a second? Okay, here, no second, the motion dies?
Well, and I'd like to, I think that we need to take our time and consider all of the options thoughtfully. So, and I, yours too. I mean, definitely the first option, I think we need to look at all of that.
Well, my option is-
Well, option one.
Right.
The option that you're in favor of.
We should have fixed this years ago, and the last administration never brought it to us. Now it's here, it's time for us to deal with it. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think we need to thoughtfully consider all of the options. I think that some of them are going to be, clearly, there's some good expenses here, but I think we need to really think it through and give it some consideration. If we do something that is not option one, I think that would probably be something where we would have to take some amount of debt. So I think that that needs to be part and parcel to the discussion too, about how we're actually going to pay for this. And, you know, it's a lot to consider. So I think getting that extra data is going to be of assistance.
So let's say that they, they say we could build south, what would it cost to begin?
I'm looking forward to getting the data and considering all of this. Like I said, I think it's going to be contingent on a lot of different things, so I'm looking forward to hearing more about this and having a discussion about the financing.
I'm not in favor of taking any more debt. We still have too much debt now. So for me, option one implies at least 10 years, maybe more, when we have the cash to do it, before we spend it on something else. I think, again, can you think of a bigger issue in the township right now?
No, I think this is a big pressing issue. But I also think that, you know, fixing the roof doesn't solve all the problems in that fire station. I think, you know, I feel like the living quarters are kind of crowded, maybe not adequate. And I think that there are some, there are some issues inside the building. And so maybe option one isn't the total solution. Maybe it's a hybrid of one and some of the other, other things that they're discussing. So I'm just not 100% sold on just putting a Band-Aid on it right now, because I'm not even sure that it will get 10 years out of that.
I don't know why it would be a Band-Aid. I mean, the professionals said this is what you need to do to fix those two issues, right? And the other thing could be done in the future if we decide to do that.
That's a good point.
I don't see that they have to be tied together.
Chuck, you're shaking, I'm sorry.
Versus, you know, the roof leaking and the water coming up the door.
I saw your shaking your head over there. What were you?
You shaking yes or no?
I don't know, Chuck. You seem to have something you wanted to add.
Yeah, we, I think it'd be helpful to clarify, I think, what exactly option one entails. Option one leaves the roof line as it currently is. It's just a replacement of the shingle, or the shingles basically, and an attempt to address some of the drainage issues on the roof. The architect wasn't confident on providing a timeline with that solution specifically. All the other options include new roof line, roof design, and the timeframe for that would be more like a year, because they would actually take the top off the building and replace it with a more reasonable roof structure.
And that would be option two?
So it'd be option two, 2.5, and option three.
It's after two. So it's a little bit more cost, it's, will cost a little bit more, but it would actually replace, I think, ceiling tiles and the floor.
Yeah, so I would still like to get a little bit more time to make that decision. But I agree with you, Trustee McAbey. I don't want to push it too much further down the line, because I think it needs to be addressed. But I would like to have all the information. I mean, right now, I don't, I don't know that I'm prepared to recommend a full teardown and a full rebuild. But at the same time, I don't want to do something that's only going to last us seven to 10 years. I've just, and I don't, and I don't think just replacing the shingles on the roof and fixing some of the water issues is going to buy us that much time, in my opinion. So, but I appreciate the position you're in, because it's something that we've, we've been looking at for, for more than a year. And I want our firefighters to have a great place to work and really live, because they live in there. So, yeah, so, yeah, so Kim, if, when you get that information, if you can get it to us right away, and then if we need to call a special meeting, we can do that as well.
Okay. And I guess my question too is on option one, how confident are we that that is absolutely going to fix the problems?
We're not confident.
Yeah, if you could tell me, yeah, we're going to pay this, and it's going to be fixing it done once and for all, I guess that's what I want to know, because I don't want to throw the money away.
But part of the, part of the problem is the way the roof, the roof slopes. So that's why she came up with option 2.5, is to actually put a new roof and slope it in a different direction, to fix some of the water issues.
And I guess I misunderstood. I thought option one, and Mr. Gillen's corrected me, was a new roof design, and that's why I said taking it off and putting it back on. So again, 1.1 million, it's not going to get any better. So I suggest we, again, let's move this thing along. And I don't need holes drilled in the south part of the left for that.
Can you talk to me a little bit about chief order, about what the process would look like as they were replacing the roof and taking it all off? What would that look like for operations?
So if we did have to vacate, we'd have to identify a property that we could move the duty crews to. Some of them could relocate to Gilmore Road temporarily, but we'd still keep some on this side of town somewhere. But we haven't identified that location yet. So there's a couple options. With most of the work that they're going to do being over the administrative side of it, there is a potential that we can still run out of the bays and simply house the crews in a, essentially, a trailer. That's going to be the cheapest and easiest solution. The only other option is to relocate, erect a temporary, we'll just call it a temporary structure, a pole barn for the truck. And we would still use a trailer to house the crew for living space while we're in that temporary spot.
Would there be, could we use the bays that we have here in the admin building? Why would that work or not work?
I don't know that it would fit the size of our fire trucks.
Would it fit some of them?
It might. I'd have to look.
Because I think this used to be the-
Oh, yeah.
Stations, so I'm wondering if we could use-
Yeah, and that's an option too. If we can use the bays here, we can simply put the living quarters trailer in that side drive temporarily.
Okay. Great discussion. Thank you, everyone, for contributing. I think some questions were answered. I think we're starting to move towards a resolution. That's great. Okay, the next item is the electronic signs.
At the last meeting, we discussed replacing the electronic signs for the administration building, the police station, and the fire station. So we didn't know if you guys had thought more about, how do you want to handle that? Do you want us to move forward with getting a quote, or getting bids for the replacement of those three sign cabinets?
Well, I feel like I don't want to have empty cabinets with no working signs. I just don't think it's a good look. I just don't think it's a good look. I think the purpose was to inform the public and I'm in favor of having them replaced. I'm not sold on one particular size. I, I would like to see more than just one quote of $42,000 each sign, but I definitely think it's something that we need to move forward on. Thoughts from other trustees?
That makes sense, I'd like to see additional quotes, I generally like to see three.
Okay.
And let's go from there.
And I think with the financial crisis we're in, I think we need to stop any extra spending on that 30, 40, $50,000 to be part of that. I think we just need to, just not do it. And if we're going to do it, I think the signs need to be fixed from the very beginning. They're really not readable, they're not big enough, you know? You can get two words on there. If you're not, if you're not stopped out here, of course, I know people do stop out here because of the lack of traffic. And the one on Gilmore is the same thing, you know, you have to slow down to redesign. So to me, if we're going to have something like that, and I'm not against it, I think they need to be redesigned into something that is readable at 40 miles an hour or 25 miles an hour. But again, at this point, what was it, 35,000?
It's like 42,000 a sign.
I just think, I think we just need to keep that money until we, until we solve some of these other issues.
Okay.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, I'd like for something to be out there and working, but I questioned that all along after installing it, like those are, they're not big enough.
Okay, so your recommendation is to find something larger but not at today's report.
We could work on that and have it ready to go if and when we can decide how we're going to pay the other expenses in the long run for the township. To me, we have more pressing issues than the signs. We could use temporary signs, which is what we use for ever and ever, if there's an event and we want to advertise for. Yeah, I, I don't know, 42,000?
It's a lot, per, so, yeah.
Times three?
Officially, a lot.
Three times?
Forty-two, 126?
Too much.
Okay, so we, we at least should get bids, correct, on what it's going to cost? And are you looking to ask for bids for larger signs to maybe include the whole size of the existing sign, including the, I guess the identifier?
Again, they need, they need to be larger than what's out there.
Okay.
No, I, I read the source, but sometimes I can't read it, even when I'm speaking, I can't read it. Again, it's just something that can be readable at 25 or, I think it's at 40, 35 or 40 on Gilmore. And I don't, I don't know that Fairfield Township needs to take up so much space.
Understand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, next items are items for board discussion. Ms. Lepensy?
So projects for future, I was hoping to get your opinions about, I think I kind of know what the answer is based on the other two discussions, but I didn't know if there was any other projects that you would like to discuss, that you want staff to be working on for the future? There's something near and dear to your heart, something you see that we're not...
Well, the one thing, I did, I did meet with Ms. Lepensy and also I think Chuck Owens was involved in some of these conversations too. But I think this really gets to, we really need to drive towards getting a very firm picture of what our financial situation is. And I'd like to see that going forward, not just for this year, but also what those financial projections look like with the projected revenues that we should be receiving from the economic development specifically over on Seward Road, but not just limited to Seward Road. It's also important to note, I believe we're retiring two of our debts this year, and then we only have one left, which is retiring in 2027, I believe. So...
We retired two, one more this year, one in 2027.
Okay, so we have two more. So, and I think that's going to free up some capital that we were making in debt payments that I think will then shift over to operations or whatever we need as we see fit. So I'd like to really get a good grasp of what that looks like and then juxtapose that with the economic development funding that we're going to be getting from the Jeds, the TIFs, all of those things because I, I want to really understand that so that we can understand, so that we know, so that we can make our decisions. And that's going to be part and parcel to any hiring, any investments in our infrastructure, any of those things. So to me, that, that's one of the most important things is to get a very clear grasp of what that looks like. Because theoretically, with retiring that debt and not having those debt service payments, that's going to free up some capital. And then I believe just Schneider Electric is getting something like 800 jobs down there when they open, I believe, in a year, year and a half. So that's going to be some pretty good income that should be coming into us as well. So I'd really like to understand what that looks like so that we can determine if we are in a, you know, a cash flush situation, a crisis situation. But I'd really like to get the data so that we can speak with that data and manage by the fact of the situation with what we actually have or don't have, as the case may be. So that's important to me. The other thing that's important to me is besides the other actual projects, I think we're going to be getting some good information from the comprehensive plan. We've just did a public meeting a few weeks ago where the folks came in to look at that. I believe that it's going to be presented to the board here shortly. And I would just, I think that there's going to be some good things that come out of that, that the board needs to consider. Of course, we have our short-term goals that we need to, and the short-term things that we need to immediately address. But I think there's some good things that are going to come out of that comprehensive plan that we should probably think about for moving forward, the things that we might want to do in the future. So I'm, I'm excited for my fellow trustees to see what came out of that. I think there's some really cool things there that we could be working on. And the other thing that I'm always interested in is more process improvement, process standardization, the, the calendaring thing that we'll talk about later, meeting, things like that. I'm always interested in those kinds of things because if we can do cost reductions through process improvement, it's going to help make us better in the long run.
Trustee McPhee?
As you know, and I don't disagree with all of that, with staring at this right in front of me, I mean, 8.46 million dollars. Very poor period of time. Our total cash is down 17,000, 17 billion. You know, our payroll, our payroll, all the benefits and everything included, is about $9 million for all of our departments. So we get about capital improvements and, and it's not really great. Here, we're seeing real money, I've never seen any real money out of the state or town. And we still have the, although we're not handling the level, we still have the other $1 million in the Florida tax year. Which we're, which we're running, so, I, I think it's right here in front of us. We have all the answers, you know. But to me, we need to plan and hopefully something to control, not much overstate, I don't know, guarantee our own income. I'm asking the administrator, how she says the number, projections, she may not have the final numbers, it's hard to know what the bill is going to be. The long term, it's going to be harder to keep paying.
I think that the concern that I have is I would, I would hate to go to the voters and ask for something and then two or three down, years down the road, we're in a, we're in a way overly cash flush position. That's what I don't want to get to. So I'm not, I think that you're right, we do need to be aware of this, but it's sort of like we're missing part of the equation. We understand that we have expenses. We don't understand completely what that economic development funding is going to do for us over the next one year, two years, three years, four years, five years. And then in conjunction with that, I'd also like to see a plan that talks about how we can move the money that we have around so that we can better manage, so that we can manage what we're, what we're paying. So we have our general fund right now, Ms. Schultz, what is that, off the top of the ballpark?
Eight point six.
Eight point six.
Eight point six, okay. So what we've been trying to do is we've not been spending out of the general fund. There's been reasons for that, one is to protect our Moody's rating, it has also been to protect our financial position. So we've got quite a bit of cash right there. And do we need that much cash? I think that several of you met with Mr. Brostart to get some ideas and thoughts on that. So I don't believe that we need to keep that $8 million. I believe that we can use some of that to spend to cover our salaries and to cover the other things that we need to do to run the township. I don't think it needs to be, the reserve does not need to be kept at $8 million. And we can use that for the things that we need to do before we go to the voters and say, hey, let's get some, let's get some more money. So I'm, I'm not saying that we aren't going to have to go to the voters at some point, but I'd like to get a better understanding of, of what that time and date actually is. Because theoretically, we've got that money in the general fund, we've got quite a bit extra there. And then if we can get the economic development coming in, that, that might level us out so that we can push that levy again further down the road. And also, that levy that we put on the ballot many, many years ago was only intended to be a five-year levy. And we have absolutely, it's lasted a lot longer than that, thanks to the efforts and the work that, that staff has done. So it was a five-year levy, we're way over that. So I'd like to keep us on that same trajectory. I'd like to know for certain with math and with data, what that looks like, because right now it's just opinions. And I'd like to know what that, what those numbers actually look like, what our expenses look like, and what the economic development, all of those things. And I'd like to see that plan for what do we do this year, next year, the year after that? And when do we get to the, you know, a, I don't want to get to a crisis mode, that is not my intent, I don't think that's anyone's intent. But I think that we need to make this decision with facts and with data.
There's a lot of data, I mean, here's the salary and benefits.
Oh, I agree with you.
It's right at $9 million, and that's no gas for this, no electric bill, you know, no road project, no, no squad, no, you know, $2 million ladder truck, our overtime through the first two months of the year was $127,000. You know, if you just pro-rate that out, that's $800,000, $900,000 for the year. Something needs to be fixed.
Well, I understand where you're coming from with that, and I agree with you, but I think that's part of the data and that's not the entire picture of the data. So the, the, I absolutely, I mean, that's our expenses, but I'm interested in what is our projected income from the economic development? And how is our debt retirement going to impact this? Again, our general fund is very healthy right now. We have typically not used the general fund for some of these things in the past, and I think it would be a good idea for us to use some of these things, that, to cover some of these expenses. So I'm just looking for, you know, clearly, I agree with you, there's expenses. But I want to know what the income is going to look like, and I think we need, we need some math, we need some financial projections here.
Those will only be projections, these are real. So again, the longer we wait, the bigger, the bigger the levy is going to have to be. So, and I'm not in favor of a big levy. In the, in the 90s, when, when I first came on board, we did a little here, a little there, and kept working our way through, two mills, three mills. They all passed, passed by big numbers, and we were still able to grow the departments. So, and that's what I would be saying, not the eight or nine or 10 mills that we probably need just to stay, you know, at the level we're at now. For a couple of reasons, first, that won't pass. Second, maybe in two years or three years, maybe we do start to see some economic growth comes in. And of course, we could always take a levy off or reduce the levy, we have that choice every year to do that. But the way we're headed this year, I, I think we need to be on the ballot as soon as we can. Not a special election like you guys did 10 years ago, but we, we need to be on the ballot for some amount of money. Otherwise, we can't order a ladder truck. And we're going to have to make major changes to the road, the road paving program in the future, things like that.
So I guess, Ms. Lepensy...
Trustee McPhee, could you make sure your microphone is, is on?
Yeah, if you want to...
Thought I'd talk a little louder, huh?
So I guess, Ms. Lepensy, what I'm really looking for is what those, I'd like, I, we need data, okay? Because we need to know, you know, what funds, so for example, on the ladder truck, let's talk about the funds that those are going to come out of, let's talk about the projections, let's talk about, I really would like some math and some data. Because I don't think anyone here knows, well, I, I take that back, I have seen some projections in the past for what that development would give us. So I know there is some data out there on that, and I want, I think that we need to incorporate that into, because my goal, I, you know, we need to provide the services to the township, but I, this is not a good, it's not a good time for our citizens with the economic times that we're in to do that, it may never be. Not that that's going to keep us from putting a levy on or not, but I think it would be not right for us to make the decision without having good financial projections and also how we're going to manage the funds to cover all of the things that we want to purchase.
Yes, I think, Ms. Lepensy, to answer your question about other, other projects for the future, I think your intent was, if there are projects we're interested in, how do you start projecting how, how that money is saved for those project or, or put aside for those projects? What I'm hearing from the board is right now, there are no immediate projects other than the fire station, obviously, and, but no new projects. I know there was some discussion at one point to look at the possibility of improving Princeton Road between bypass four and, and Hamfire, so...
If I may, I would like to talk about that either now or later during my OKI report.
Okay. So, so I know those things were discussed at one point, and so I think based on the fact that we have a major issue next door that we need to address, I would think any other kind of project should just be put on hold for now. And you shouldn't have to spend a lot of time figuring out what other projects we have. I think that's what I'm hearing from the board right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Great.
I mean, there are other projects, but we can't afford it.
Great.
Well, I'd like to get data on whether or not we can afford them.
Well, I mean...
I want data. I don't want to keep saying, well, we can afford it or we can't afford it, we need the data.
But on March 11th, right now, we're, there's no projects that we want her to set money aside for because we don't have the information yet. I'm just trying to answer her question, letter A, so we can move on to these other letters.
Gotcha. I was clear, heard you.
Okay.
All right, indigent burial process, we recently had a request to, I guess, for the township to pay for an indigent burial. And when we looked at our policy, we actually say that we're going to pay up to $1,000 for the cremation. But then we do not make the applicant provide any financial data to prove that they're indigent and can't pay for the burial. So what we did is we drafted a policy to set it in motion that if you did come to us and ask us to pay for an indigent burial, you have to provide financial data for us to make that decision. And what we did is we took... And what we did is we took Anderson Township's policy and we kind of tailored it to us. And then what we do is we base it, or what we're asking you to look at is, we base it on the poverty levels, the 2025 federal poverty guidelines, and that you cannot exceed 150% of those guidelines, and that's when you qualify, as long as you're under that 150%. But you would have to provide financial data. You would have to fill out the application. You would have to sign an affidavit, you know, basically swearing that you are in, you have the inability to pay for the cremation. So we did send this to Katie. I don't know if you had any comments or questions.
Yeah, I, of course, when I would check about it a while ago, I believe. And.
That was, that was before the.
Draft of the policy.
What was the application? Wasn't it, I mean, it was, it looked at with respect to the affidavit and the.
We, we drafted up the affidavit because there were concerns with an applicant.
Right. And I think I also, Diane sent it to me today, and I took a look at it.
Oh, okay. All right.
So could we have that on our April agenda for approval?
Yes.
Okay.
So the purpose of this is determine whether the family can afford to bury a township resident that passed the law.
Right.
And right now, we will pay up to $1,000 for the event.
Right, but we don't.
Without any verification.
Yeah, we don't, we don't ask you for any verification. So what a lot of people are doing is they're just saying, I'm not going to claim the body because I don't want to pay for it. Well, this would say, yes, you have to claim it, and then you have to provide that you cannot pay for, you have the inability to pay for it, then we would pay for it, then we could also seek reimbursement through the state's program.
But they, they have no family who's going to fill this one out.
Well, if they don't have any family and there's nobody, then I guess we are on the hook for it.
Then it typically comes through the hospital or whatever it may be, and that they coordinate directly with the township.
So it doesn't have to be the family member, it's somebody else saying, they don't have any bodies or, or have any assets.
Right. The whole purpose of the indigent burial program to begin with was, it used to be like if, if somebody was found dead in your township and they, and they didn't live here, didn't have any family, then it used to be the state was responsible for that years ago. But then the state in 2010 shifted all of that responsibility to the townships, and then we were kind of on the hook for it. Well, now the state is coming back with reimbursement programs and, you know, giving us the ability that if we do take on something like that, that we can seek reimbursement through them.
Is that required by the state that we proved they couldn't pay for it before they reimbursed it?
I don't think so, no. The statute doesn't require it.
Pass it right along and get them all back. Until the money runs out, there's only a certain amount of money.
Yes. But I think it's up, I think we should do our due diligence as a township. Instead of just taking on that expense, why not ask the family for proof that they can't pay for it?
And how many requests did we have this year?
We only have one that I'm aware of. I don't know what we had in the past.
And the only other comment would, would be to, we could have that as a guideline and have some flexibility.
That's fine.
Would you say 125% or something?
It's 150% of the poverty, poverty guidelines. Yes.
It depends on the number of people in the family as well.
Yeah. So if you have one person in your family, the poverty is 15,650, 150% of that is 23,475. And then it kind of goes up based on the number of people in your household. So if you have eight people in your household, it's 81,225,000.
But you're still talking about the immediate family that lives in the same house, right? Not the, not the children that live elsewhere. You're not going to check their finances to see, right?
I don't think we say it has to be immediate family. I think it just says if anybody, anybody.
I think, I think Trustee McAvie's question is, if the husband and wife live, live alone in the house and they have four grown children all making $1 million a year outside.
No, it's the household.
No, it's the household itself.
Right. I think that's what he's trying to verify.
Oh.
Living in the house.
Yeah, living in the house. I thought you meant somebody outside of the community coming in and requesting it that, never mind. My, my.
Well, they may be requesting on behalf of, of the family, but not live there.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, can we have the next item?
Public records policy handbook. So the public rest, records policy handbook was updated to include the body cam, public records requests. So I think it's on page, so anything in blue. So on page six, section 203, everything in blue is an update. Let's see. I think we also made little changes that, you know, see, like we refer to a floppy disk, and we no longer have floppy disks or discs or CDs, so that little changes like that were The biggest one is Article Three, Section 301, and I think that's all about the video recording. I think that's pretty much it.
Any questions on the policy manual updates?
Is that something that takes a vote to change that policy?
Yes.
And we do have a couple of policy manual resolutions on tonight's agenda.
Yes.
But the police is not one of them, correct?
Yeah, I think it's just the, the general personnel.
Yeah.
There's a fire, there's changes to the fire policy.
Right. And Katie, you've looked through all these changes and. Can we move forward with these changes with a motion?
Yes. Well, I think there's a resolution.
Yeah.
On the agenda for tonight.
Oh, for the, for the police, there is too?
This is not, there's no changes to the police. This is just the regular personnel manual.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is our public record.
This is just our public records.
I apologize. I, okay.
It's just the police wasn't the update.
Yes. There was changes to the way that police public records are processed, but it's making, the changes are being made to the general policy.
And so is that the resolution 2543 then, is what this is? Amended public records policy?
Yes.
Okay.
Not just for the police department.
Okay. Perfect. Any questions on that other than mine? Okay. We have the next item, please.
Meal reimbursement versus per diem. Currently, I think we reimburse with a receipt for a meal up to a certain amount. The fire department is requesting that we go to a per diem. They originally asked for just deployments, but I didn't know if you guys would be interested in upgrading it, you know, across the board, that we just do it on a per diem rate. The way per diems work, it depends on where you're actually going for training or where you're going to be, you know, say you go to a different city. So the example that I included in the packet was just, I use Middletown where I live, and basically, it's based on the zip code, and then it tells you what the lodging rate is, what you can be reimbursed for, or given money for, for lodging. So in Middletown, the standard rate is 110, back in October, still 110 as of now and through the year. And then if you're having a meal, so basically, the standard rate would be $68 for the day, and then it breaks it down, breakfast, lunch, and dinner with incidentals. So basically, if you're going to be deployed, and you, say you go to Florida, we would look up that zip code of the area that they're going to be in, and we would look up, like, what is the meal reimbursement for that day? What is the living reimbursement, the lodging reimbursement? And then you would issue a check to that person, and they would take that money and use it towards their meals and lodging. So I didn't know if you guys would be interested in something like that, or, I guess what Chris is saying is that it's very difficult to get receipts sometimes when you're deployed. So it'd be easier for him and others to, if he was just issued a check, he could take that money and use it, you know, while he's being deployed. Wasn't sure, Shelley, do you know, like, if he does have that, or maybe Ryan, it, does it get reimbursed by FEMA?
Yes, it does. It does.
So what does FEMA require?
They don't require anything.
Okay.
Yep, they just use per diem. But let me just say one thing, though. Sometimes you don't get the money till you get home. So I don't know if we would be issuing checks upfront, because you don't know what meals are going to be provided.
Yep. Part, part of the requirement for them to deploy is to bring a certain amount of cash, because they know a lot of times, they're likely not going to be able to get receipts by paying with credit card and that kind of thing.
Yes, I did want to mention that. So a lot of this deployment is because they're going into disastrous areas, therefore, places don't have electricity maybe to give receipts. And so that's been an issue. So deployment, I definitely think is an issue. Obviously, we would like a standard policy across the board, so, you know, it's all the same. But we would also need to update our handbook, because the per diem says $50, and we should probably update it to say per diem in the state or city you're in, per zip code. But the check would be issued when they come back. And as long as there's documentation, it's not a fringe benefit.
Other thoughts? Department heads?
No, just, just with the deployments, that's the only issue we've actually had come up, which is why we're bringing it up now.
Yeah. And that, we don't have much travel outside of that. I'm just saying, it would be nice if it was the same policy across the board.
It is the same policy across the board, except for the. I mean, I'm okay with the deployment.
No, I was going to say, right now, it's neither.
You still have to bring home a receipt if you have one. Yeah.
Yeah, but if you.
I can't believe you're paying cash, and they're making change, and they don't have a receipt.
It's possible, though. Right, Ryan?
Well, again, it, it just makes you wonder, I guess, you know, a vendor, food truck, whatever. But I'm, I'm okay with it, with not having the receipts, and I'm okay with $50 a day. I mean, again, it's not like we have to pay the total cost of somebody eating, right? For deployment. I'm okay with that. But the rest of the time, I think, I think we need to be, our policy across the board is bringing a receipt.
So I, I have a, just a slight different opinion on that. I, I'd like the idea of having a per diem for meals. Often difficult to, because sometimes you don't plan out where you're eating, how you're eating, how quickly you have to eat, if it's on the go. I like the idea of a per diem for meals across the board for all employees. I just think it's easier, less receipts to have to deal with. And I think also, that cuts down some potential problems involving, well, I'd really like to eat someplace nice, but I, I have to watch what I spend. But if I just get a, a particular stipend for the day, or per diem for the day, if I spend more than that, I'm not getting reimbursed. If I spend, spend less than that, then maybe I could spend more tomorrow. I, I just think that is easier to, to do. I don't think it, I don't think it's, it, it cuts down on any kind of abuse of eating in nicer places and have to just turn in receipts and then just get reimbursed for it. The whole confusion about tipping is eliminated, because you only tip so, so much with getting receipts with per diem. It's like, you can tip all you want, because you're getting so much money per day, and whether you spend it on tips or you spend it on something else. I'm not sure how the policy is, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't read it, but, you know, if we've got a, someone that's been deployed and, and they're out in the field and they want to have a beer with their meal, are they allowed to order alcohol and have to turn in a receipt for that? It's per diem, they can go ahead and get the beer, because they're just getting so much money.
And the same with tax.
I'm sorry?
Same with tax.
And tax.
So some restaurants won't take tax off, because they're not even, they don't even know how. Therefore, you, if you pay tax, then you're just, just part of your per diem.
Right. So, and I think that the per diem for being deployed is good for lodging, because of what's been explained this evening, is that sometimes there's no electricity, so they can't give you a receipt. And then, how do I get reimbursed? You know, is, how do I reconcile that expense? But if they just get a per diem, it's like, hey, well, you were gone five days, you get this much money for lodging. And, and I guess, also, you know, we don't know outside factors on how much lodging is, you know, because if, if it's in a disaster area, sometimes they raise their rates real high for lodging, because a lot of people are coming in. So.
I also, I'm sorry, I also wanted to mention that, I know, Mr. McAvie, you're not in favor of what, outside of deployment, but if you make a policy that you have to attach the agenda to where you're traveling, it will tell you if meals are provided. So we do that at the parks to where it'll say, like, if we go to the OTA, lunch is provided on Friday. So it'll say that, so then someone can't request a per diem for that meal. So we require that you attach an agenda for your conference or whatever, like if the police or fire are going to a conference, so.
So the per, per day rate would be modest that much?
Yes, so the per day rate is broke down by breakfast, lunch, and dinner. So if the agenda says that they will provide lunch, then you don't get that part of the per diem. So that does help with accountability, just so you know, if we want to add that to our policy.
While we're talking about deployment and travel, I'd like for the board to be notified and maybe have some say in, especially in the financial situation we're in, I'd like to see us have some say in any extra travel that may be planned or may come up. Deployment, you know, we usually get our money back, so we front the money. And again, I'm, I'm okay with deploy, being deployed. I still want to know in advance. I wouldn't want to read about it in the paper. And I wouldn't want us to be short, and I wouldn't want us to have to pay overtime because we're deployed. You know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a tough little circle there, trying to figure all that out. But I'm okay with the per day rate for that. But if you're just, you know, going to Indianapolis and you're staying at the Hyatt, I don't know if I'm going to give you $68 to just drink beer on. You can spend your own money on a beer.
Well, I mean, exactly. I think it cuts down a lot of, of abuse if we just have a per diem.
But I, I think, the way I understand you on that is, it cuts down on our receipts that show the use, you know, as far as whether they're drinking or not drinking or whatever, you know, again. I don't, I don't think the township ought to be paying for that.
It also cuts down on using their company credit card for meals, because if it's per diem, you would pay for it yourself. And therefore, if someone uses a company credit card and does buy beer, they've done used it, now we have to go get the money from them. And although that's not been a problem, what if it was? So.
It could be a bigger problem than that.
True. But I'm just saying, we don't have to then babysit because someone tipped too high, paid tax, drank a beer. So it'd be, you would not use your company credit card. So there's good and bad to both, honestly. Because then, you know, the bad on the employee is that, what if they don't have no money? I mean, what if it's somebody that's, you know, maybe lower paid? We deal with that at the parks, where maybe they can't afford to just have money to eat, and we would give them a virtual card or something. So you've, you know, it's good and bad to both. I don't think we would have that problem here, but I'm just saying, there is good and bad to both.
So as it stands right now, are we just looking? Is that one of our resolutions tonight?
No, we would have to draft a policy.
Okay.
We just wanted to get your opinion first.
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of having a per diem for deployment, and I'm in favor of having a meal per diem for out-of-state travel, or out of, out of town, overnight travel for staff as well. I think it's a lot easier to keep track of, a less work for our, our finance department. I, I just think that, that should be included. I think lodging, per diem. I think lodging per diem, I don't think that's a great idea, because if you're going, if we're sending staff on professional development, those rates are set. There's nothing we can really do about it. And I don't think that we should just give them $124, but the hotel's $149. I don't think that's, I don't think that's a good way to do it. But I think if you say, if you give them a per diem for food, and like Ms. Schultz said, adjust it if meals are provided, I think that's a better way of going. So I'd be in favor of adjusting the policy to include per diem for meals for overnight travel for staff as well.
But not daytime traffic?
No, I don't think so. If it's daytime, no.
So what would you propose? $50 okay?
No, I think the federal rate is fair. I don't think-
You need to go through the process of looking each one of those up and-
Yeah, by zip code. It's real easy. They have, you just Google it.
Which is saying 6250 or something.
No, I think it's easier to look up where they're traveling to.
So do you adjust it based on that?
I think so.
Which is another reason that an agenda would be required to be attached. That way, we know where the person's at.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we could try that. See, we could, we could ask this, or whatever, you know, and kind of hear.
Okay.
And then if it's deployment, I'll just need to know where you're at, and it won't be bad.
Okay. Great. We have the next item, please?
Increases for part-time firefighters and paramedics and EMTs. So Chief Roderick wrote a memo requesting that we, that we changed the rates for paramedics and EMTs for our department. So he went through and he looked at 22 area fire departments, and he found that the averages were, for paramedics, $21.40, and for EMTs, it was $18.65. He said, "Our current starting rate for each level is, for a paramedic, it's $19.30, and for EMT, it's $18.50." So he is requesting that we move to a flat rate, which suggests, he would suggest the following rates to keep us competitive. So for paramedics, he would request that we move to $22 an hour, and for EMTs, to $19.50. So as you know, we continue to lose part-time paramedics and EMTs because of other departments. Everybody's getting full-time employees, and they're paying higher rates, and a lot of people are just not wanting to work two jobs. So we're hoping that if we increase the rates, that they'll want to stay. Thoughts? I know what you're gonna say based on the other confirmation.
What are the overall, what's the total up on the projected up?
We do not have that, but I can get it for you.
Okay, because I'd like to understand what, how that's going to impact our overall numbers. And then I'd like to understand how you're going to cover that with your current funding structure.
Sure.
Current budget, bottom line, in the basement.
Bottom line.
I mean, if it saved us money from overtime, that would be great, and I'd be willing to go the extra $0.95, whatever it is, to be in line with everybody else. Still don't know where we're going to find the money, but we can't afford to be paying this kind of overtime.
No, I don't disagree with you.
You don't disagree with me?
I don't. I don't think we can afford to be paying it.
So you agree with me?
I'm sorry, yeah, I agree with you.
Okay, so we'll come back with some more data points, okay?
All right. Police department equipment. So Chief Shabali had, during his staff meeting, we talked about his need for additional equipment. So they had originally, actually, I'll just let you go ahead, Chief, if you want to talk about the silencers and the helmets.
So there are three items listed. Silencers for the 223, those are the shoulder weapons, the rifles, and it's kind of a contemporary issue where departments are deploying them more now, and so there are more hearing injuries if you deploy inside a residential or a residence versus outside. Outside, the limit is about 165 levels, decibel levels if it's outside. If it's inside, it could be 180, 200. It has caused some hearing problems with police officers across the nation. I know one specifically, and that's Fort Collins, Colorado, and kind of said he took a beating on that one for not supplying him because they had complained before. So approximate cost would be $30, or $30,000. The other component to consider as far as liability is if you have citizens around you and you deploy that rifle, it could cost hearing aids to citizens also. It is the weapon of choice for an active shooter, whether it's inside a residence or a school, a building. The rifle is the weapon of choice to you, so we have to consider that. If we buy them all, again, about $30,000. There are seven bullet points listed on my report, but the primary ones are the ones that I just listed.
But we don't have any way of controlling these spec pages?
We do not. Knowing if it's a school setting, you're going to have kids, staff embedded in the room, so it's possible they can hear that. And at the range, we use obviously hearing protection, but we don't have the time to put hearing protection in an accident circumstance where they deploy out of the vehicle with a rifle to conduct their business. The Kevlar helmets, we're actually looking for six. I had listed five, but we found that we needed six. The rest are fine, and those are about $3,500, $3,600. And the ones that we need are people who don't have them. I gave mine up. The captain gave his up. We're increasing staffing now. We assume we'll be up to, I believe, 26, probably by the, yeah, by the end of next month, we'll be up to 26. We need two more, so we have a need of six helmets. The expiration date, I'm not concerned about on those because we really don't make them for the helmets. You have to be reasonable, like after 10 years, you should probably get rid of them. But there's no dates on them as they are in vests. The issued vests always have a expired by date that you should probably get rid of them. I wouldn't want to suffer the liability on that. The ammunition, it's just a yearly cost for ammunition, and that's $6,100, and that is also for 223 and the 9mm ammunition. And that's for range work. They go to schools outside of the township where they, I think we have two or three guys going to get certified in additional range. So they use up ammunition for that, but we shoot about four, five, six times a year, depending on the circumstances. Questions?
So it appears that you're going to be asking for around $42,000.
That's correct. And obviously, I think we're all aware of the current circumstances. We could buy half the suppressors and take it down a little bit. My luck. Someone who doesn't have a suppressor fires her weapon, and we've got a problem. But if it's about the cost, I understand. But, you know, we prefer to have the 30, obviously, in at one time to make sure that everybody has them.
And do you have an idea when you'll be requesting those, or is that on?
Well, I'm kind of seeking guidance from you guys. It'll be in April if you guys say, go ahead and move forward. To add on to the other list.
Thoughts from the board? Questions?
I mean, we could, I don't know if there's a difference if we wait and get the other two after you hire them or not. You know, I don't know if there's any way of spreading it out. I mean, it sounds like we need them, especially the silencers, so, right?
Yeah, the-
Helmets, we're gonna need those.
Yeah, the helmets we have right now-
Not shoot so much? I mean, $6,000. Could be at least wait until you get your first half settlement?
That would be-
Sometime in April, I don't know.
It'll be first week in April.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can-
You know, how much it is? What'd you say, $42,000?
The, well, the, I think-
I was adding $30,000 and then the-
I went to public school, so I didn't want to do the math on it. But the ammunition is $6,100. The helmets will be $3,500.
Total, all the helmets?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
$10,000, that's $10,000.
And then the $30,000 would be for the silencers.
That's all state bid?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you said three, I thought you meant $6,000 for the helmets, not-
Right.
You said 36.
36.
I misheard you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I thought you said three to six, so I-
Okay, great, so no problem.
Well, I'm okay. I mean, it seems to me that that's the kind of equipment where we should have. There's nothing extra there, right?
No, there's nothing.
So I'm okay finding the money somewhere to do that. We'll put that resolution on break, but I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it's appropriate as well.
You may have to ask for collections and-
Thank you.
Okay, can we have the next item?
Township calendar. So in keeping with our past practice, we wanted to go over our calendar so that we're aware of what will be coming up. So we failed to do that in March, but on the March docket, we had, all that we had on there was to make decisions on raises. And then, obviously, we had, we're supposed to have a CIT meeting tonight, but we didn't. We had to, we canceled it due to lack of business. But on Thursday, March 13th, at 8:00 a.m., we have our Hamilton JED meeting. So for April, we typically advertise for summer intern positions. We have to pay Bureau of Workers' comp. Oh, that reminds me. This year, we will be getting an assessment. It was, I believe, almost $13,000. That's going to be additional that we didn't know about. And our payment is increasing to $85,000 this year, and next year, it will be $126,000 based on past claims over the last five years. So we had a staff meeting the other day, and we were trying to brainstorm and come up with ideas of how we can combat that, because obviously, it's a growing issue because it's affecting all of our budgets.
And what was it last year?
That I don't know. I forgot to ask you. Do you happen to know off the top of your head?
I mean, it's always around the end of the year.
Oh, is it? Okay, because this year, it's like $85,000. I thought it was going to be increased from last year.
But I was confused why on April, because we don't pay until December.
This is an extra assessment.
We do that every year by April, or by February 15th, if it's-
True-up, which is, they estimate it based on our payroll in November, and then we true it up based on our payroll. Well, we're always owing lately because our payroll keeps going up every year. So that $13,000 in, on top of the true-up.
Yes.
Okay, that I was not aware of.
Yes, this is new because of all the claims.
Oh, I was not aware of that, so-
Yeah, because of the group retro program that we participate in. That's why we're getting an assessment.
Okay, and usually, we get a rebate, don't we?
Yes.
Okay, just want to be sure.
Yes, no rebates for Fairfield Township this year.
Okay, we have gotten rebates in the past. And $126 is what we're expecting in November, is what you're saying?
No, next year.
Which is, we pay in November for next year, I think.
No, okay.
And I did not budget that much, just to be aware.
Okay.
I budgeted about 90.
Okay.
So we'll have to remember that.
Sounds like we need to find $13,000 more right away.
Yes.
And how much, and our true, we had our true-up too, which was eight or $9,000.
Right.
So-
This is additional.
Okay.
So would it make sense to trend the data to analyze where our workers' comp expenses have gone up and maybe bring in OTARMA or something and investigate those and see what training we could do to address that? Or I think that would probably be a good thing to do so that we can find the causes and maybe do what we need to do to work to get those costs down.
Okay.
Is that, is that our claim or the group's claim?
It is.
That it went up because of the claim?
It's because of our claims over the last five years. So our employees who have filed claims for accidents, trips, falls, catch their finger in the door, those kind of claims.
And we might be able to do some training to get rebates if we participate in the training.
Oh, that's true.
Yes, because we need to investigate that and see what we can do in order to help mitigate those costs.
Okay.
Could you give us a number, some kind of history on what we had in the last couple of months?
Yeah, I've got the thing for the last five years. I can make copies for you.
I mean, because this didn't happen last year, so I'm wondering, you know, the last year, what's going to be the number?
The last year, the reason everything is going up is because the BWC and over the last couple of years has now started to allow cancer claims, and that is what is driving a lot of these cost increases across the board. So-
And no claim that needs to be done?
Right. So then, we typically also disperse TIF funds to Fairfield City Schools based on our tax collection, and then we do the PO for ROMKE for spring cleanup, which we will bring in April. And then, don't forget, we have Easter and Spring Cleanup Day next month. So is there anything else that anybody can think of that needs to be added to the April calendar besides police department equipment?
No. Could we add to the calendars when we are hosting the Butler County Township Association? Could we have that on the calendar when we are doing that so we can look ahead and always have it?
Yeah, it won't be again.
Thank you, Trustee McGee.
It won't be for 26 more months, because it's 13 townships every bi-monthly. So, yeah.
It's 27.
Yeah, so we'll add it, though.
May, May of 2027.
We'll calculate it out and add it.
But just, that's nice to know.
But speaking of that, we could add in January the OTA conference, if that's not in January, if we, if you would like to add that.
Yeah.
So do we have a sponsor for the dinner this week?
No.
How much is that budget? What's that cost?
It's $8 a person.
$8 a person?
Mm-hmm.
How many did you ask?
50. $400.
Does that include tip?
Well, we don't tip our students, but I did add an extra, a few extra in case additional attendees come. I added that to the PO. Sorry, I did not add it to the payment yet since we don't know who's showing up, but I added to the PO, so we're ready. Which is a great price, honestly. Super price. In the past, it has been more than that, so-
And I knew that this will be a big one because it's the-
Health Department, yes. Yes. So we need a reference.
Might not be enough, but-
Right now, I'm at like 42, so I hope it'll be enough. We went back statistically and looked at every health department meeting, and it was somewhere a little below 50, so that's why I thought it was safe.
That includes the staff that's coming?
From Fairfield Township, yes, and-
No, I mean, from-
Health Department. Mm-hmm. Yep.
The cities, the representatives and all that.
I got the list from the health department lady that's in charge, and she's getting RSVPs, so yeah, I think we're ready.
And then, I know you have April 20th Easter on here, and I'm assuming that includes our annual hunt that we do.
That's on the 12, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, it's on the 12.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to be really expecting that this year.
And payment to the, what did you say earlier? What do you guys call it, where you pay, we pay a percent to the developer on Seward Road? That's another payment that has to be made in April.
All the tip payments after we get our settlement, but 30 days after that, we have to make the payment. Right?
So we have to pay the developer too?
Yes. What you're probably thinking is the bond payments, right?
The schools, like paying the school.
Yeah, she's got to pay in the school.
Yeah, but we're not going to pay those until after we get our money.
Right.
More than 30 days.
Right. But we do pay the developer on Seward, I think 75% of the increased value of just one building, or not one building or something like that, but we do pay the developer. That's part of this, what did you call it, Mr. McGee?
Seward project?
Yes.
Yes, and I say we hold that payment until we get caught up on the JED revenue. That'll, that'll get some attention.
I didn't think they were related. I thought that was related to the TIF. Okay. We have an agreement, though, to pay them in a certain time, so just-
We have an agreement to receive our income and not get that. Right? Any movement on that? That's right. So we're going to have our own assessment. So we're gonna have our own assessment.
Okay, anything else for April? I think we have a sponsor already for the egg drop. Is it egg drop soup? No. That's something different. Helicopter egg drop, we have a sponsor for that.
Yeah.
Egg soup.
Yeah, Tim Bowman has, uh, agreed to pay for the helicopter egg drop.
Out of his pocket?
Yeah.
Yeah, he set it up already.
He did it last year as well.
What's that?
Where's he from?
Plumtree Realty. And I believe he's a township president as well.
Yeah, that is a township president, right?
Right?
Yeah.
We're gonna do something recognizing them.
Yeah, we failed to really do that well last year, but I think this year, it's gonna be advertised better that he's sponsoring it. And his name will be spelled right, hopefully, on social media this year.
And as a board and as a township, we could still do something afterward.
Yeah. Agree. Okay, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll move on to communication, anybody sign up? No one signed up. So we'll move on to our consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered by the Board of Trustees to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any trustee may remove an item from the consent agenda by request. No second is required for removal of any item. Items removed from the separate discussion will be considered after the motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Birdy?
Yes, and that is approved. The next item is the Fiscal Officer Report, Ms. Schultz.
Uh, I don't have anything for you this evening, just let you know when our tax settlement comes in.
Any questions for Ms. Schultz? Okay, Administrators' Report, Ms. Lipenzi?
So I have a number of resolutions tonight for your approval. So Resolution number twenty-five dash forty is a resolution authorizing the purchase of security cameras from Swoka in the amount of eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. It will be paid from the general fund. We, uh, talked about these cameras at the last meeting, we provided locations in the packet. And, um, if you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
As much as it, as much as I'm in favor of doing this, I would, I would hold this and that we answer some financial questions. Seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Uh, there was some discussion that there was budget of money from the Veterans Memorial Committee to cover the cost of security cameras, or lease the security cameras over on the memorial. Is that still part of the conversation?
Yeah, there's still-
There's funding available for the cameras, uh, in that location.
So, um, could we get a breakdown on if they could cover the things for the memorial park? And then, what would it cost the township to cover the admin building?
It's only gonna be- Yeah, there's, there's five cameras and five licenses. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong quote.
Yeah, I see four cameras, so if you divide the, say roughly twelve thousand by four, you get three thousand apiece.
Rough, yeah, rough. And how many is it, the Veterans Memorial?
Just one.
Okay.
Okay, so three thousand dollars would come roughly from, okay, and then nine thousand would, would be coming from the township's portion.
Yep.
So this is the cost to purchase and install?
Yes, sir.
And what about operation?
Operation, um, I believe it's just gonna flow through Swoka, right? But we wouldn't have, do we have to pay them any additional monies to, to manage it? I don't think so.
I don't believe there's, uh, there's any cost for licensing the use of the cameras. I don't know if there might be, uh, you know, potential costs down the line for software. Uh, but these will be tied into the same software that the police department's currently using at their building, and they'll be able to access, uh, and view these as well.
Do we pay to keep a running video of those for like so many days? Like backed up?
They're pretty much, uh-
Yeah, I think it's built in the cost.
Yeah, it's the upgrade that, if, yeah.
I'd be okay purchasing the one for the, for the memorial. And the participation being reimbursed from-
So I don't know if that's gonna, if it's gonna break down exactly like that. I think there is gonna be a requirement for some hardware in this building. Uh, and that's gonna be used by all the cameras, so it's not gonna be just the three thousand, but we could get a quote just for that and then have the additional hardware, if that's the direction you guys wanna go.
Yeah, I, I think it's at least worth getting those two separate quotes.
Sure.
Bring it back. Good.
We're gonna leave this as a first read, then?
Yeah, just leave, it's, just as a first read, yeah. Okay, can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution number twenty-five dash forty-one is a resolution approving revised EMS billing rates for Fairfield Township Fire Department. So we s- Go ahead, I was just gonna say, we spoke about this at the last meeting, and you got, you all seem to be amenable to increasing the rates to keep us in the middle.
Second, any other questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, you call the role, please.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Birdy?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted, can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-five dash forty-two is a resolution authorizing the Township Administrators sign a grant agreement with ODNR for the Heroes Park Project. So we applied for money to, to change over one of the tennis courts at Heroes Park to pickleball courts. So we, the grant amount was a little less than thirty-five thousand dollars, and the state requires us to sign a grant agreement, um, for that, in order to receive it. I think the total cost of the project was around a hundred and twenty thousand, so we will have to match, uh, the difference.
And how long do we have to? Once we agree, we sign this contract, we have so many months to have it installed?
Yeah, the deadline is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six.
Mm-hmm.
And so we are agreeing to use the money by then or return it?
Um, it's actually a reimbursement, so-
Oh, it's reimbursement?
Yeah, you just don't get it if you don't perform it.
Okay.
And what if we decide to perform less of it? What if we decide that we don't wanna do a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or something less?
We said in the grant agreement that we agreed to change one tennis court over to four pickleball courts. So if it comes in less than a hundred and twenty thousand, we still have to perform four pickleball courts. There is no wiggle room on that, or they will not give you the money.
Well, there still may be a way to get four courts at less-
Yeah, you can do a lesser way, but you still have to perform four.
I'm all for pickleball, but if we're concerned about what, we're gonna put money into cameras or not, then I think we might wanna think about this a little bit more.
Well, I think that we could enter into the agreement and then decide, if we decide not to do the work, then we just won't get reimbursed, because we didn't spend the money. But if we agree to, uh, accept the reimbursement after we do the work, and we have until next December, so we have eighteen, nineteen months, plus the twenty months to spend the money, I think we should get into the agreement now. And then, we can decide later on down the road if that's something that we are definitely committing to. You know, maybe we can even look into, um, finding some sort of healthcare system that might even help sponsor, that's even legally allowed to do some of the pickleball courts, um, and put their plaque on the, I know we have to have the ODNR plaque there, but why couldn't we have like a Mercy Health plaque? That, that helped pay for the cost of the pickleball courts. I think at least if we agree to accept the money now, and then we can work on how do we finance that before December of twenty-six. Is that fair to do?
Sounds fair.
Trustee McAbby?
Much to adopt.
A second, any questions or comments?
Well, I appreciate your thought on that.
Great. Um, Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Birdy?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that, uh, resolution is adopted, may we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-five dash forty-three is a resolution approving amended public records policy for Fairfield Township. So this is the first read on the, uh, public records policy that we spoke about at the very beginning of the meeting. So if anybody has any other questions, I can go over all the changes again, if you need a refresher.
And law records look fast, everybody's in favor, moving forward. Addressing the issues that we need to address.
Yes.
Much to adopt.
Second, any other questions or comments? Thank you for your work on this, that's much needed. Uh, Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Birdy?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted, can we-
Can you take five minutes?
Yes, we'll do a five-minute recess, um, at eight forty-one.
Okay.
Okay, I was, I was gonna ask.
Okay.
No, you, anytime you change the policy, you have to, you have to sign off on it.
No, you, anytime you change the policy, you have to get a sign off on it. So. Okay. I thought it said the policy. Oh, I didn't. So. Okay, Steve. You said goodbye, and then I'll do the rest of the issue, and I'll send it to the others because it was a C I T. I don't know if I stepped in that. I don't know why I wasn't. So I'll provide a. So you're getting it out of Simmons? But we just had to put it in our personal name.
What is it? Put it in personal name?
The whole policy.
Okay.
The whole entire policy. So it had to be like a section in our personal name. That's what they made us do.
So that's why it's in a third section. It's going to be part of the personal manual.
Right.
See, right now, it's not part of its own house.
They didn't have to put it in the personal name?
No. Do you know anything about that? So our public records policy is not in our personal manual. It's its own separate policy. Remember when the auditors thingy for not signing it?
Isn't that weird? How different?
Yeah, different auditors required to.
Yeah, because we had to make it part of our whole personal.
Oh, really?
So maybe you should send her a resume and a personal manual, right? Eventually add it in there. Well, why don't you add it in there instead? That way you're going to fully sign it.
The whole thing.
Right, you don't have to have two separate signatures. Because I was wondering why it said employee side. Because I thought it would say this officer side. And what's compared to that? That's really because you used to have it in your hand.
Yes.
Which I think should be. But that's not the way it is now. And I have a lot of. That's what I'm thinking. Pretty many five years. My policy, I don't have to. Mine, I have to. So I was just like, but.
Everything is applied so uniformly.
I know. When Larry was like panned up.
Because I mean, I was talking to my walls with the C I T.
I'm freezing.
They were like, we don't care. Yeah, turn it up. And who would have known, right? Because.
Jeez.
I know. It's one of our sixteenth birthdays. I'm going to finish your permit tomorrow, just so y'all know. I'm not going to stay off the road because she takes her driver's test on Friday.
Actually, she probably stays off the sidewalk.
Yeah. No, you're right.
Be safe on the road.
That's true. Don't go down College Hill Road. Have the fire engine on standby, please.
Always.
Where's she taking her test?
At Hamilton.
Okay.
I've heard that it's easier if you take it at Butler's Head, but I don't want it to be easier for her. She needs to actually know how to drive. You'll love this comment she made. So when she, I said, when you get your license, you will not be allowed to drive anywhere but school and back and practicing that because for now. And she's like, they wouldn't give me my license if I wasn't prepared to drive. Oh, yes, they would. There are many people in the road that are not prepared to drive their driving. She seriously fought. I was like, wow, you're living a dream.
It's okay to recommence our meeting? Everybody ready? Okay. All right, we are back at 8:46. And so may we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 25-45. A resolution authorizing the renewal of the Lexipol subscription for the Fire Department in the amount of $17,436.08 paid from the Fire Fund. So this resolution, I guess we approved it last year to move to Lexipol for our policies and procedures for the Fire Department. And we initially paid $25,000 for the subscription. And then the renewal is this $17,000 number.
So this was in, actually, the consent agenda originally, I think?
Yes.
But I asked it to be pulled from the consent agenda just in case there's any discussion. Since this was the amount that we had talked about as the renewal, in fact, I think it maybe was slightly different.
It was slightly less. And Ryan called and they said that there was a price increase at the end of last year. So that's why it's not the 16,000 that was listed in the original amount or original resolution. It's the 17,436.
So this is the first read with the option to approve. Does anyone have a need to approve it this month? Is that?
It's not due until May.
Okay. So it does not need to be approved this month?
Nope.
Okay.
Add that to our.
So what happens if we don't approve it? We don't pay it?
The system goes away. We lose access to the policies and procedures that we've created as well as our Fire and EMS online learning platform. That's a part of the package, which is critical, all of it, quite frankly, is critical.
What does that save us in training?
What does the software save us?
Did you say training?
Yeah, there's a Fire and EMS learning platform that's part of it. So you've got.
Is that something we'd have to have that trained somewhere else and have to pay some of that?
Yes. Yeah.
Because that's a lot of money every year.
So are you asking, Trustee McAfee, what would the cost be to have the training done someplace else?
Well, I was just trying to justify $17,000 every year plus what it goes up to be. Again, that's sizable.
Sure. So prior to us implementing Lexipol, our policies and procedures were, I'll say, lacking to say the least. We didn't conform really anywhere close to some federal and state guidelines and regulations for things that we had to have in place. And that was simply because we didn't know. So the Lexipol system really does ensure that you're covering all of your federal, state, and any local guidelines or laws that's going to reduce our liability in the event something does happen.
Also, I'm sure Otarma would appreciate the fact that we've adopted policies and procedures that are in conformance with state and federal laws.
It's a risk management that we also in the police department have. First thing that attorneys will ask, because you can probably ask Katie, is let me see your policy.
In training?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll have this on.
Does it, do we need to wait? Or is it the kind of thing we could move forward on now?
We can, but we don't have to if you want to think about it. That's why I put it on as a first read, because it didn't have to be voted on this month.
We should have a first settlement before the next meeting here. Close.
Yeah. Even if approved tonight, we don't have to pay it right away either.
Right, it's true.
We can wait.
Once it's paid, I mean, once it's approved, it has to be covered, right?
Yes, we'll have to PO it. Yeah.
So we're probably, yeah.
It's not out of our bank.
You're right.
Yeah, we'll just wait. Okay. So can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 25-46 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of fencing for the Milton Street Park from Monsters Fence LLC in the amount of $6,375 paid from ARPA Fund 2272. So this is a project that we started last year. We received $150,000 from the county commissioners to put into, and we decided to put it into the Milton Street Park. We currently have a five to 12 playground structure there. And right now, they are building the two to five playground structure. And I think I sent you guys pictures that Jeff was so nice to forward to me the other day. And it kind of showed the progress that we made, that they made so far with the playground structure. But this fence would go around that playground and kind of, you know, keep the kids where they should be on the lot.
And I believe we have a requirement to spend this money anyway by a certain time, right? End of the year, I think. Just so you know.
How long a fence is this?
I forget the total square. It's basically going to run off the same dimensions as the other fence, same type of fence.
Is that a good price, 63.75?
Yeah, we've got three bids. The way I come about Monsters, they're a subcontractor. Mills Fence, they came out to the public point building last year to control our engagement. That's how it comes across. So they came out, they just put up the fence around. Yeah, we have a playground. 10 yards.
Well, it's linear feet. So what do you want me to add?
He does work for Mills. He just doesn't charge the same rate.
So it looks like that rich, one of the quotes is for 228 linear feet of fence. And that includes gate, great. And it's PVC coated, commercial grade chain link.
So the good news is we were given 150,000. We've spent, what, 122 on the playground structure to date? Well, we'll spend 122. So we're still under budget with 150,000 even with buying 63.75 for fencing.
Who gave us that money?
The county commissioners.
CBVG money?
No, I believe it was ARPA funds, right?
It was ARPA. It was federal tax money.
Right, yes.
Came out of our wallets in DC and came back.
Yes.
Just to make sure we understand, nobody's given us anything. But motion to adopt?
Second. Any further questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. May we have the final resolution, please?
Resolution 25-47 is a resolution approving changes to the Fire Department Policy Manual. So these are some of the Lexipol policies that we just talked about. Basically, I don't know if you can go over.
Yeah, actually, this was spurred in discussion with Ms. Lepensy. So these are three of the required policies that Lexipol recommends. One of them is a work-related illness and injury reporting. It provides really guidance to the employee as well as supervisors up to and including me on the steps to take to make sure we're following the ORC in the event of an injury. The second one is temporary modified duty, basically light duty assignments for those that are injured but still able to function in some capacity, which allows us to reduce lost time, which is a huge component in the BWC rates that we see continuing to increase. And then it also provides guidance once they have reached the point where they can return to work, and it outlines the steps that they need to take as well as the township to get them back to full duty.
Motion to adopt?
Second. Other comments, questions for the chief? Okay. Harry Nunn, can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. May we have the final resolution, please?
Resolution 25-48 is a resolution authorizing the payment of funds to John R. Jurgensen for the 2025 paving program in the amount of 83,834,623.14, which will be paid from the RID Fund 4903. So back in November, we passed a resolution setting aside roads that we would like to have paved. We gave it to the county. The county took our list, included it with the county's list and other townships. We got a bid this last week. The bid amount was awarded to Jurgensen, and I think the total amount was.
Eight million, 370,000 to 4220.
Yes. And Fairfield Township's portion is the 834,623.14.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
So my question would be, we already passed a resolution to spend so much money. Does this, and I'm sorry to read the resolution, does this circumvent, does this cancel the one resolution and creates a new one?
Well, now that we have the amount, this will give us the authority to open the PO. Because I didn't open the PO when you approved the up to. So this, I will open a PO for this amount now that we have the actual amount. And the PO will be to Jurgensen, where in the past, we didn't know who the PO was for.
Okay.
So.
We'll know when the bill's coming, we'll know why we're paying them.
Yeah, and then we won't go over that amount, because that'll be all the PO will be. But it is kind of double work, but it's kind of the process we take.
And now that we know how much it is and who it is, we should do the resolution. And this is, this is good news. On the agenda so far, this is the good news.
Yeah, but I don't.
We had estimated 1.2.
But I don't think it includes retrace, right? I mean, I know that's minor, but so it's not all of it. Is it, is it everything but retrace? Okay, so a little bit more, but not much.
Right, 4,500 or something.
Right.
Nothing compared to 1.2 million.
Okay.
That we thought was going to happen. So where are we on the concrete work for this year? We already, we've already encumbered that money, right? For the concrete work.
Yeah, it was back in December.
Then, yes.
Okay, Ms. Schultz, can we have the roll, please?
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes. And that motion, I'm sorry, that resolution is adopted. Committee reports. TID, Trustee McAfee?
Well, we met yesterday, and I had forwarded the report, the whole package I received, forwarded to the administrator, asked her to forward it on you. The real news in there was we're getting ready to carve out another project, name another project as part of the North Hamilton Crossing. And it's going to be the bridge and the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac, and the roundabout that'll go on the other side of the river. And it's, it's moving to the south to the north end of.
It's at West Elk Center of North Washington Boulevard, right?
Yeah, it's moved, this, we already done, that's a separate project.
Oh, okay.
We've crossed that out before.
Okay.
This one, we're getting ready to carve out where the bridge is going to cross. And it's just north of Sookie Lips' large parking lot right there. So that's good news as far as I can see, because it's pushing the road further south.
For the south of the bottom farm.
Not a final decision, but it's going the right direction. And the other comment that was made was with new leadership in Washington, we think that we're going to pick up speed with the project itself. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Trustee McAfee? Thank you very much. Trustee Harkemaier?
Nothing really to report on EMA in addition to what I mentioned at the last meeting. There is some training next week in Ross Township. I think that's on the 20th. So reach out to Jim Boland if you would like to take that. That's what I talked about previously. And we, there has not been any studies that I'm aware of regarding the potential changes, either EMA or sheriff, that I know of right now. I haven't heard any updates on that. So I believe it's just in a holding pattern at the moment. Regarding OKI, some kind of good news there, at least something that could potentially impact the township. OKI had some additional funding available, and they decided that they would allocate it potentially towards local roads, specifically collector roads. So that would not be neighborhoods, but it would be collector roads. And that could be used for paving, things of that nature. So that's kind of a good thing. I recall OKI doing this in recent history. In speaking with County Engineer Wilkins about this, of course, I brought up Princeton Road, because that is, I believe, our only collector road in the township. So that's the only one that it would apply to. So he has given that some thought. I think he's still thinking about that. It is still on the table as something that might or might not work for this funding. He's got some definite thoughts on that, but I just wanted to let you know that that was in play.
Great.
And I have nothing to report on cloud.
Any quick questions for Trustee Harkemaier? Okay, thank you both for those reports. Board member comments? Trustee McAfee?
Nothing at this time.
Trustee Harkemaier?
I was very pleased to represent Fairfield Township last week at the Ready Annual Meeting. That's the Regional Economic Development Forum. That's really the Tri-Cincinnati, all of that. So I was honored to go up and receive on behalf of the township, along with a representative from the City of Fairfield and the representative from Schneider Electric Economic Development Awards. So that was a pretty, pretty big deal. There were five companies that were honored with that award locally. One of them was Pacific Manufacturing over on Seward Road for all the work that they've done over the years. And the other local one was us for Schneider Electric. So it's a very, very good thing for Fairfield, Fairfield Township, as far as bringing in the jobs and hopefully some economic development funding. So very good thing.
Great. Anything else?
That's all I have.
My comments would be, we were pleased to take part in the state of the community that Fairfield City Schools puts on. I think that was last week. Yes, last week. And Ms. Lepensy did an outstanding job presenting on behalf of Fairfield Township about all the exciting things that are going on. So I was very happy to see that presentation. Very professional, and be proud to be a part of this organization. Also, our very own next-door neighbor, Fairfield North Elementary, was given a Momentum Award from the State of Ohio for their academic process, progress. What have only 10 school buildings in the county to receive that award? And I think it's less than 60 schools, buildings in the whole state that received that award? I think that's the number. Don't quote me on that. And so kudos to our, the principal and the staff over at North Elementary and the parents for having an interest in their students. I think I would like to maybe try to recognize them in some way, shape, or form. While we're recognizing Mr. Bowman for his donation towards the egg drop, maybe we can do something for North Elementary as well.
Sounds good.
Okay. Announcements. The Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting is Tuesday, April 8, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Our Easter egg hunt is Saturday, April 12 at 11:00 AM to 12:30 at Heroes Park. And Spring Clean-up Day is Saturday, April 26, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM or until the dumpsters get full. So just wanted to put that out there publicly to clean up early, clean up often, and bring your stuff early so that there is room for you. It's always been a very successful event. Hopefully, we'll have great weather like we had today, and we'll have a huge participation in that.
And that's going to be two locations, right? I've read the flyers. There'll be the other location and over here.
Yeah, there'll be dumpsters here and our soon-to-be board-tested parking lot on the other side of the firehouse. And then, of course, in the Belmont area at the former firehouse. Fire, correct? Great, okay. Before we move into executive session, just want to let the, in full disclosure, we probably will have action following executive session. I just wanted the people online to realize that before we move into executive session. So at this time.
And before you start with that, I mean, we're going in, and we're going to talk about pay raises for our non-contract people. And according to the agenda, we're going to talk about creating a new position and promoting somebody to that position. I don't know why we need to go in executive session for that. Why can't we just take care of it now?
To discuss salaries? I think we need to move into executive session to.
We've already talked about it.
Yes, but we haven't come to a consensus on where we all stand on that. And I think there's going to be discussion based on personnel, and I think that needs to be, that needs to take place in executive session.
Well, the personal evaluations definitely should be done in executive session. But as far as pay raises go, are we still considering 10% pay raises for some people?
So, well, we can discuss that once we come back out, but let's, let's discuss where we are. I don't know where anybody else is on what percentage.
Well, I made it very clear where I'm at. I mean, I think in the financial situation we're in, I think that 3%, I don't believe that's the real cost of inflation, but 3% raises for our non-contract people, I'm willing to support that. But I think that still adds almost $100,000 to our payroll for the year. Again, in the financial situation we're in, I can't see us going.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments. I would love to discuss that more in executive session and have a healthy dialogue about that. So I move, we move to executive session pursuant to ORC 121.22G1 to consider the discipline, appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I was going to say, and again, on the record, I don't, I don't see why we have to go anywhere else but right here to go ahead. We're going to come out, we're going to vote on it, so I don't know why we can't do it here.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your concern, but I also appreciate the concern that our staff has that we should be discussing their compensation on.
from Monsters Fence LLC in the amount of six thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars paid from ARPA Fund twenty-two seventy-two. So this is a project that we started last year. We received a hundred fifty thousand dollars from the county commissioners to put into, and we decided to put it into the Milton Street Park. We currently have a five to twelve playground structure there. And right now, they are building the two to five playground structure. And I think I sent you guys pictures that Jeff was so nice to forward to me the other day. And it kind of showed the progress that we made, that they made so far with the playground structure. But this fence would go around that playground to kind of, you know, keep the kids where they should be on the line.
And I believe we have a requirement to spend this money anyway by a certain time, right? End of the year, I think. Just so you know.
How long a fence is it?
Not worth it to total spark, what it is basically, coming off the same dimensions as the other fence, same type of fence.
Is that a good price, sixty-three seventy-five?
Yeah, we've got three bids. The way I come about Monsters, they're a subcontractor, Mills Fence. They came out to the public point building last year to control our damage. That's how I come across that job, so. We came out, two genders, put out the fence around, the other playground.
He does work for Mills, he just doesn't charge the same rate.
So it looks like that rich, one of the quotes is for two hundred and twenty-eight linear feet of fence. And that includes, uh, gate, great. And it's PVC coated, commercial grade chain link.
So the good news is we, we were given a hundred fifty thousand. We've spent, what, a hundred and twenty-two on the playground structure to date? Well, we'll spend a hundred and twenty-two. So we're still under budget with a hundred fifty thousand, even with buying sixty-three seventy-five for fencing.
Who gave us that money?
The county commissioners.
CBVG money?
No, I believe it was ARPA funds, right?
ARPA, it was federal tax money.
Right, yes.
Came out of our wallets in DC and came back.
Yes.
Just to make sure we understand, nobody's giving us anything, but. Motion to adopt?
Second. Any further questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And I would suggest, if this is done, we have a.
Ribbon cutting.
You know, we never did on the other.
Correct, we, well, first, hold on one second. Resil- resolutions adopted. So we had one scheduled, but then it got canceled for weather, all kinds of issues.
Too hot and sunny.
It was too cold and rainy, if I remember. Vacations.
It was, it was warm and sunny that day.
It was in July, if I remember, or August, maybe.
It was very sunny, but it was warm and dry.
Yeah.
Okay, we will, we will schedule.
And if some people can't be there, that's okay. That would be chucking eye, but no, you weren't, because I went up there and there was nobody, there but a bunch of kids.
Well, the important part is the kids were there. Okay, can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution number twenty-five dash forty-seven is a resolution approving changes to the Fire Department Policy Manual. So these are some of the Lexipol policies that we just talked about. Basically, I don't know, you can go over.
Yeah, actually, this was spurred in discussion with Ms. Lepenzi. So the, these are three of the required policies that Lexipol recommends. One of them is a work-related illness and injury reporting. It provides really guidance to the employee, as well as supervisors up to and including me, on the steps to take to make sure we're following the O R C in the event of an injury. The second one is temporary modified duty, basically light duty assignments for those that are injured but still able to function in some capacity, which allows us to reduce lost time, which is a huge component in the B W C rates that we see continuing to increase. And then it also provides guidance, once they have reached the point where they can return to work, and it outlines the steps that they need to take, as well as the township to get them back to full duty.
Motion to adopt?
Uh, second, other comments, questions for the chief? Okay, hearing none, can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. May we have the final resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-five dash forty-eight is a resolution authorizing the payment of funds to John R. Jurgensen for the twenty twenty-five paving program in the amount of eighty-three thou, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and fourteen cents, which will be paid from the RIT Fund forty-nine oh three. So back in November, we passed a resolution setting aside roads that we would like to have paved. We gave it to the county. The county took our list, included it with the county's list and other townships. We got a bid this last week. The bid amount was awarded to Jurgensen, and I think the total amount was.
Eight million, three hundred and seventy thousand, two forty-two twenty.
Yes. And Fairfield Township's portion is the eight hundred and thirty-four, six twenty-three, fourteen.
Let's go down.
Second.
So my question would be, we already passed a resolution to spend so much money. Does this, and I'm sorry, I didn't read the resolution, does this circumvent, does this cancel the one resolution and creates a new one?
Well, now that we have the amount, this will give us the authority to open the P O. Because I didn't open the P O when you approved the up to. So this, I will, we'll open a P O for this amount now that we have the actual amount. And the P O will be to Jurgensen, where in the past, we didn't know who the P O was for.
Okay.
So.
Plus, we'll, we'll know when the bills come in, we'll know why we're paying them and things like that.
Yeah, and then we won't go over that amount, because that'll be all the P O will be. But it is kind of double work, but it's kind of the process we take.
And now that we know how much it is and who it is, we, we should do the resolution. And this is, this is good news. On the agenda so far, this is the good news.
Yeah, but I don't.
We had estimated one point two.
But I don't think it includes retrace, right? I mean, I know that's minor, but, so it's not all of it. Is it, is it everything but retrace? Okay, so.
Little bit more, but not much.
Forty-five hundred or something.
Right.
Nothing compared to one point two million.
Okay.
That we thought was going to happen. So and where are we on the concrete work for this year? We already, we've already, you've already encumbered that money, right? For the concrete work.
Yeah, it was back in December. Then, yes.
Okay, Ms. Schultz, can we have the roll, please?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes, and that motion, I'm sorry, that resolution is adopted. Committee reports. T I D, trustee McAbby?
Well, we met yesterday, and I got forwarded the report, the whole package I received, uh, forwarded to the administrator, asked her to forward it on to you, that the real news in there was, we're getting ready to carve out another project, name another project as part of the North Hamilton Crossing. And it's going to be the bridge and the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac, and the roundabout that'll go on the other side of the river. And it's, it's me to the south, to the north end of.
So west south end of North Washington Boulevard, right?
Yeah. It's moved, this, we already done, that's a separate project.
Oh, okay.
We've crossed that out before. This one, we're getting ready to carve out where the bridge is going to cross. And it's just north of Sookie Look's large parking lot right there. So that's good news, as far as I can see, because it's pushing the road further south.
Further south of the bottom farm.
Not a final decision, but it's going the right direction. The other comment that was made was, with new leadership in, in Washington, we, we think that we're going to pick up speed with the project itself, so. That's all I have.
Any questions for trustee McAbby? Thank you very much. Trustee Harkemaier?
Nothing really to report on E M A, other, in addition to what I mentioned at the last meeting. There is some training next week in Ross Township, I think that's on the twentieth. So reach out to Jim Bowlen, if you would like to take that, that's what I talked about previously. And we, there has not been any studies that I'm aware of regarding the potential changes, either E M A or sheriff, that I know of right now. I haven't heard any updates on that, so I believe it's just in a holding pattern at the moment. Regarding O K I, some kind of good news there, at least something that could potentially impact the township. O K I had some additional funding available, and they decided that they would allocate it potentially towards local roads, specifically collector roads. So that would not be neighborhoods, but it would be collector roads. And that could be used for paving, things of that nature. So that's kind of a good thing. I don't recall O K I doing this in recent history. And speaking with county engineer Wilkins about this, of course, I brought up Princeton Road, because that is, I believe, our only collector road in the township, so that's the only one that it would apply to. So he has given that some thought. I think he's still thinking about that. It is still on the table as something that, that might or might not work for this funding. He's got some definite thoughts on that, but I just wanted to let you know that that was in play.
Great.
And I have nothing to report on cloud.
Any quick questions for trustee Harkemaier? Okay, thank you both for those reports. Board member comments? Trustee McAbby?
Nothing at this time.
Trustee Harkemaier?
I was very pleased to represent Fairfield Township last week at the Ready Annual Meeting. That's the Regional Economic Development Forum, that's really the Tri-Cincinnati, all of that. So I was honored to go up and receive on behalf of the township, along with a representative from the city of Fairfield and the representative from Schneider Electric Economic Development Awards. So that was a pretty, pretty big deal. There were five companies that were honored with that award locally. One of them was Pacific Manufacturing over on Seward Road for all the work that they've done over the years. And the other local one was, was us for Schneider Electric. So it's a very, very good thing for Fairfield, Fairfield Township, as far as bringing in the jobs and hopefully some economic development funding, so very good thing.
Great, anything else?
That's all I have.
My, my comments would be, we were pleased to take part in the State of the Community that the Fairfield City Schools puts on, I think that was last week? Yes, last week. And Ms. Lepenzi did an outstanding job presenting on behalf of Fairfield Township about all the exciting things that are going on. So I was, I was very happy to see that presentation, very professional, and be proud to be a part of this organization. Also, our very own next-door neighbor, Fairfield North Elementary, was given a Momentum Award from the state of Ohio for their academic process, progress. Out of only ten school buildings in the county to receive that award. And I think it's less than sixty schools, buildings in the whole state that received that award. I think that's the number, don't quote me on that. And so kudos to our, our principal and the staff over at North Elementary and the parents for having an interest in their students. I think I would like to maybe try to recognize them in some way, shape, or form. While we're recognizing Mr. Bowman for his donation towards the, the egg drop, maybe we can do something for North Elementary as well.
That's good.
Okay. Announcements, the Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting is Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M. Our Easter egg hunt is Saturday, April twelfth, at eleven A M. to twelve thirty at Hero's Park. And spring cleanup day is Saturday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, from ten A M. to three P M. or until the dumpsters get full. So just wanted to put that out there publicly, to clean up early, clean up often, and bring your stuff early so that there is room for you. It's always been a very successful event. Hopefully, we'll have great weather like we had today, and we'll have a huge participation in that.
And that's going to be two locations, right? I've read the flyers, there'll be the other location in over here.
Yeah, there'll be dumpsters here and our soon-to-be board-tested parking lot on the other side of the firehouse, and then, of course, in the Belmont area at the former firehouse, fire correct? Great, okay. Before we move into executive session, just want to let the, and full disclosure, we probably will have action following executive session. I just wanted the people online to realize that before we move into executive session. So at this time.
And before you start with that, I mean, we're, we're going in, and we're going to talk about pay raises for our non-contract people. And according to the agenda, we're going to talk about creating a new position and promoting somebody to that position. I, I don't know why we need to go in executive session for that. Why can't we just take care of it now?
To discuss salaries? I think we need to move into executive session to.
We've already talked about it.
Yes, but we haven't come to a consensus on where we all stand on that. And I think there's going to be discussion based on personnel, and I think that needs to be, that needs to take place in executive session.
Well, the, the personal evaluations definitely should be done in executive session. But as far as pay raises go, are we still considering ten percent pay raises for some people?
So, well, we can discuss that once we come back out, but let's, let's discuss where we are. I don't know where anybody else is on what percentage.
Very clear where I'm at. I mean, I, I think in the financial situation we're in, I think that three percent, I don't believe that's the real cost of inflation, but three, three percent raises for our non-contract people, I'm willing to support that, but I think that still adds almost a hundred thousand dollars to our payroll for the year. Again, in the financial situation we're in, I can't see us going.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments. I would love to, to discuss that more in executive session and, and have a healthy dialogue about that. So I move, we move to executive session pursuant to O R C one twenty-one point twenty-two G one to consider the discipline, appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Well, I was going to say, and again, I, I want, on the record, I don't, I don't see why we have to go anywhere else but right here to go ahead. We're going to come out, we're going to vote on it, so I don't know why we can't do it here.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your concern, but I also appreciate the concern that our staff has that we should be discussing their compensation on, on the percentage that they will be getting or won't be getting based on merit or not merit. And we should have those discussions in executive session. And whether we come back out here and give everyone a flat rate, we may decide on that. But I think that decision is, is purposeful to have it in executive session.
Discussion.
Discussion, we're not making any decisions, but we deliberate in an executive session.
Right, that discussion is purposeful to be in executive session.
Well, and, and I know we, we talked about it the last two meetings.
Okay. So there's been a first and a second, can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
No.
Okay, and that motion passes, we will, we will go into executive session at nine, ten P M. And we, we will be returning to have action.
Bye, guys. See you guys Thursday. See you Thursday.
Okay, you're eight dollars.
How quickly they forget. I know. I always do. I keep saying tomorrow. Oh, yeah, and we're still live.
We are?
Yeah.